And City Council, thank you all for coming. We're glad that you're here. We'll call the meeting to order and before we move any further, Councilwoman Steinbach is excused tonight. She's finishing up some training. We also want to thank Ryan and Grant Cates from K G S K E R M for putting us out there on YouTube and on the FM at ninety-nine point nine. And thank you Tyler for being here and covering us for the Torrington Telegram. At this point, we'll have the pledge and Rick, if you'd do that, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Information items for tonight. It's spring in Goshen County and we've had the benefit of some good moisture and some mild temperatures. Be aware that the potential for severe late afternoon and evening storms is elevated at this time of year. This past Memorial Day was cool and wet, but the cemetery looked good. A great number of people were in town and on site and the events of the day went well. Hopefully everyone took the opportunity to reflect on the sacrifices made by those who came before us, guaranteeing the opportunities that we benefit from today. The kids are out of school. Please be aware that they'll be everywhere. Some of them will have their noses buried in their phones and otherwise not paying attention. Please be extra cautious and slow down as you travel throughout the community. A reminder to put your cellphone aside while driving and be much more aware of the kids that are out and about. City swimming pool opened with limited hours on Sunday, June fifth. Regular hours began yesterday on June sixth. And a great big thanks to all of the city staff who worked long hours once again making emergency repairs to get that thing open. And it's going to be tougher and tougher every year to keep it open. So good job, you guys who did that work. Streets and sanitation supervisor Ed Holly reminds us that the Baylor side is open every Saturday throughout the summer for you to bring your glass, grass clippings and your yard waste. Also, there are grass dumpsters throughout the community. Do not put anything other than grass in the gas dumpsters. Trash in those dumpsters prevents us from recycling the clippings into mulch, which is available to residents of the city free of charge. Cameras on site provide evidence of those who violate city ordinances and the City of Torrington will prosecute offenders. Please report offenders to the Torrington Police Department. There's a lot of activity going on at the area sports facilities. Sports teams of all ages are competing at sites across the city. A reminder that your pets are not allowed within those facilities during non-event times. There is a city-owned dog park available for your use. Please take advantage of that facility when you need to exercise your dogs. We want to remind everybody that Elk Eco Cycle is taking cardboard, separated paper products and aluminum cans at their Curtis Avenue location. The recycle center is open from eight to four, Monday through Wednesday, and plans are that eventually other recyclables will also be processed. Please take advantage of this opportunity to improve your community by recycling your waste products. Fortunately for those of us here in Torrington, there's little COVID information to report. Total death count for Goshen County still stands at fifty-seven and that hasn't increased since early February. Community hospital reports two patients with COVID-related issues. COVID is still out there and as a result, warming has been elevated from low risk to moderate risk. Seven locals tested positive here last week, so take care to protect yourselves, your families and your coworkers. Call your local healthcare provider or public health for COVID testing or to schedule vaccinations and/or booster shots. City of Torrington's in the final stages of our 2022-23 fiscal year budget. Second reading of that budget will happen tonight and then final reading of the budget will take place on June twenty-first. Tonight, we expect to ratify the floodplain ordinance, which was passed in emergency session on June first, guaranteeing the public access to flood insurance programs should they choose to purchase it, and construction guidelines for those choosing to build in the floodplain designated areas. City of Torrington Water Department's in the process of identifying all water service lines. Of particular concern are those lines with lead and copper connections. The identification must be complete by October of 2024. You will likely receive a phone call from Water Department staff attempting to schedule a time for you to have a technician inspect your service line. Those appointments will usually take less than five minutes to verify their information. If you have any questions or concern with this request, please call Tom Troxel at the Water Department at five-three-two-twenty-twelve. Primary election is next August and the general election follows in November. City candidates will take office on Tuesday, January third, 2023. Three candidates have registered to run for mayor. They are Rick Patterson, Dennis Kelly and Herb Dobie. For the two open council seats, Kate Steinbach, Wayne Deal and Shane Victorin have paid their fee and will be on the ballot. Councilman Ted Kenny has decided not to run again for his seat on the council. As usually, we continue very fortunate to be living here in Torrington. Every day sad events across this country and world reinforce the fact that this is a great place to live. We can all continue to count our blessings. Please make every effort to be kind to one another, tolerant of our individual differences and appreciate all the benefits that we have here in Torrington and that life here has to offer. That'll conclude that. Okay, next is to approve the consent agenda. It includes the minutes from the five-seventeen-twenty-two council meeting as published.
To approve the consent agenda as presented?
Councilman Kenny or Kelly, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have approved the consent agenda. Next item is to approve the agenda. There are no additions and corrections and it stands as published.
Move to approve the agenda.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have approved the agenda. Nothing in the public forum, so we'll move into action items. Item number one is an emergency ordinance, permanent approval. Attorney Eddington.
Mayor and Council, we would ask, I would ask that again, you make a motion to declare an emergency. It's a continuing situation. Under the statute sixteen-four-four-four-four D, we had to take permanent action within forty-eight hours unless the emergency continued. Then we have thirty days to take action. And of course, we're doing it within a week and that's why we just set that for tonight. So we'd ask that you declare that emergency and then I'll read the ordinance by title and ask that you vote on it again, please.
Okay, so we did this once, but then so we should be doing it again, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good enough. So Council, we'd like, I need a motion to declare an emergency.
So move.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to declare an emergency for the purposes of working on design standards ordinance number twelve-sixty-one. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have approved a motion to approve an emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance amending and reenacting chapter one-seven-point-one-six of the Torrington municipal code, twenty-twenty-two revisions relating to design standards.
Okay, thank you. Dennis and Jim, I guess either one of you can speak to this?
I really have no updates other than I would stand for any questions that you may have from last week.
Yeah, we've been through it. We should know what we're doing.
Yes, sir. I've had no public comment.
Council, do you have any questions or concerns?
I'm not asking any questions because I didn't think this was a test. No, it looked really good. As I read through that, I was impressed with, with what you've done, what you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this moment, we'd like entertain a motion to approve ratification of the motion or the ordinance that was passed last Thursday.
I'd move to approve the ratification of the ordinance twenty-one-sixty-one.
Thank you, Councilman Kenny. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve or excuse me, to ratify the motion, the action that was taken last Thursday. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have approved the motion.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy it, Jim?
It does. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great. Thank you. Next action. Item number two is a catering permit. Julie Miller Harshberger with the three oh seven Sports Bar and Grill is requesting a catering permit for Music on Main Summer Concert Event to be held June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two from five to ten PM in the parking lot located at one nineteen East Twenty-first Avenue. Now I assume we could do all four of these at the same time, but probably we should do them individually?
You should because they're separate licensees.
All right, all right. Chief Johnson?
I can probably explain the four of them and then you folks could address them individually. This is the follow-up to the special events permit from last week for the Music on Main Events. The actual event itself is going to be from six PM to nine PM. As you'll notice, the catering permits reference from five PM to ten PM to allow an hour for setup and an hour for teardown. And I believe they're actually going to start setting up the event and addressing issues in the parking lot at two PM. So it will cover a pretty good section of that evening. We have worked with the folks at Economic Development and some of the folks on the licensees side to come up with a set of common expectations and that's at the very back of the four different applications there for you. The list, the dates, the folks that will be providing the catering permit or alcohol services for each date and then what those requirements are. And we're keeping that fairly simple. We're going to have all of the alcohol service storage and consumption inside of that designated liquor area. If you recall from last week, it's just the perimeter of that City Lot Five parking lot. We're going to have that taped off. The Economic Development folks have gotten a custom essentially liquor event tape that labels it for a liquor area boundary to keep alcohol from going out or coming in. We're going to have one entrance or exit into that approved liquor service area. If you're standing, looking at the front of the bathrooms in the city lot, to your left would be the stage, which will be facing south into the parking lot. To your right would be the entrance into the event. So we'll have that single entrance. That helps keep an eye on things and make sure we don't have alcohol coming in and out and different, different vantage points there. IDs are going to be checked at the vendor's point of sale. They'll provide a wristband for the event and then folks who wish to drink inside of the event need to continue wearing the wristband while they're consuming. And they're going to have two staff members or volunteers that are going to be deployed diagonally on the outskirts of the event so that they can keep an eye on the entire perimeter and also keep an eye on the folks that are inside to make sure that we don't have violations of this agreement or other liquor law. And then all of the vendors have indicated that they wish to serve alcohol in cans or manufactured can. So they're going to do all alcoholic drinks are going to be served in a factory container in the form of a can. And then the non-alcoholic drinks will either be in a factory container or in a designated cup for non-alcoholic beverages only. And kind of teaming up and talking with everybody, it feels like that covers all of the major contingencies that we need to address in an event like this. All of the folks who have applied for the catering permits are experienced and know what they're doing and have done events of this type before. So we don't really have any concerns beyond that. I'm sure happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. All that information that he just shared with us obviously applies to the next four of the catering permits and probably with some minor variation. They're all going to be basically the same.
Yeah, the variations would be very minor. I mean, just in terms of maybe exactly how they want to set up their tables for service or how they're, you know, manage their operation for a successful outcome. But those expectations would be consistent for everybody.
Okay. All right. Council, do you have questions for Chief Johnson? Okay, hearing no questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve or whatever.
You, and you do, to clarify, you do want these one at a time?
Individually, we're doing item number two.
I would move to approve the three oh seven Sports Bar and Grill.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve a catering permit requested by three oh seven Sports Bar and Grill for the Summer Concert Event on June fifteenth. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Okay, we have approved that motion. Thank you. Item number three, catering permit, very much like the last one. Tiffany Leslie with the Bronco Bill, excuse me. The Bronco Bar is requesting a catering permit for Music on Main Street Concert Event to be held June twenty-ninth from five PM to ten PM in the public parking lot located at one nineteen East Twenty-first. The previous information should apply and unless you have questions, we'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the catering permit for the Bronco Bar.
Thank you, Councilman Kenny. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the catering permit requested by Tiffany Leslie for an event June twenty-ninth. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Okay. Item number four, same exact information. This time it's Clayton Kilgore with the Open Barrel Brewing Company requesting his catering permit. Music on Main Street Concert Event to be held July thirteenth. Same information, same description. Council, do you have questions?
I would move to approve.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the catering permit. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have approved that catering permit. The next item, same thing. Ethan Fitch with the Mint Bars requesting a catering permit for a Music on Main Summer Concert Event to be held July twenty-seventh from five to ten, public parking lot, so on and so forth. Same as the previous three. Information is the same. Council, do you have questions? If no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the catering permit to Ethan Fitch and the Mint Bar.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the catering permit for the event July twenty-seventh. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We've approved those four Music on Main Summer Concert Events.
I would just like to thank, I would like to thank Mr. Kilgore and Tiffany for even taking the time to show up for this thing. Yes, if we did have questions, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We're glad everybody's all in favor. Hopefully everything turns out just great.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of work, a lot of work has gone into this between you guys and Chief Johnson and Economic Development. And I don't know how long we've been working on this, over a year probably.
Getting close to it again.
So.
I just hope it works out great.
Yeah, me too.
Community is awesome. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming. Thank you, Councilman Kelly. Appreciate that. All right, item number six, catering permit. Tiffany Leslie with the Bronco Bar is requesting a catering permit for a ninetieth birthday party to be held on June eleventh, twenty-twenty-two from two PM to seven PM at six oh five East Twenty-second Avenue. Chief Johnson?
Yeah, this catering permit requests for a fairly large birthday party to be held at the parish hall just east of St. Rose's. The, it's a pretty simple setup. There's a very large room inside the parish hall where the party will be held. Tiffany's got a plan for how to handle the service on that and we came up with a list of agreements on best way to manage it and she's quite capable of doing that. So don't have any concerns.
Okay, very good. Council, do you have any questions for the people? They're here right now.
Just, just a statement, I think. They, they should be commended for celebrating a ninetieth birthday party, so.
Keep me in mind, it's coming. Other questions?
I would move to approve.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve, request of catering permit for the ninetieth birthday party to be held June eleventh. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. We have approved it. Good luck. Okay, we're done with catering permits. Item number seven, a potential sale of real estate. The property is located at two seventeen West Twentieth Avenue. Kirk Treasurer Strecker, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The property indicated is the old ambulance service building and the current maintenance building. We advertised it three times in the local paper for bid. We received one bid from Elise.
Mook.
Mook. She currently owns Thrifties right next to it and the bid was a hundred and ninety thousand. I believe that the market appraisal was.
Two thirty?
Two hundred and thirty.
Okay.
She is approved by her bank, pre-approved. So I guess I'll open it up for discussion on whether or not you want to award it or sell this property to her.
Buildings and ground supervisor asked us on the building and so on, what it's worth. Make good sense. Are we going in the right direction?
I think you're going in the right direction. That building, it'd be great for her because she's right next door. It's not handy for us at all. It's out of the way. It's more maintenance, more insurance. It's hooked to two other businesses which we haven't had two big issues with that. We've pretty much got all that worked out over the years. But that'd be a way better property for her than for us.
And we have plans for the money that we might receive as revenue from this?
Part of those funds, we'd like the Council to look at letting us build a new garage right behind this in the parking lot right here so we can keep our maintenance guys right here and keep all the trucks and all the equipment right here. So anytime he doesn't, he wants to do something in a shop setting, he doesn't have to run clear across town to do it. He's right here.
Okay.
And he is going to be a lot more busier than he was before with his new responsibilities, so.
Okay, so the issue is for the Council whether or not we want to accept the hundred and ninety thousand dollar bid for this property. And I think we've heard information. If you have other questions, this would be the time.
Was there, did we ever have an appraisal done on the building?
Market analysis.
Market analysis, not an appraisal.
No, but that's what we have.
So we don't really actually know what it's worth.
We've never done an appraisal on these types of things. We always use it a market analysis. Even in probates, the courts allow that because there's an argument that they're more accurate than an appraisal. An appraisal is an attempt to satisfy underwriting requirements at a financial lending institution and a market analysis is a more current event valuation. And so we, we believe that that is more accurate and, and the market analysis we had was two thirty, is that correct? And so that's, so you, the decision, I think, for you is whether forty thousand less than the market analysis is something you're willing to accept.
And where does he use that building now? Is this what, storage? Currently has two of the spray bug trucks in it, two or three of the old bug trucks that we use in the summertime. We don't use them at all in the winter. Our facilities maintenance person store his, stores his pickup in there. So he has to go over there to go to work in the morning and come back over here. And it's just unhandy for him. And then he's just, it's just storage of basically what a shop would be for him in the, in the different rooms. Most of it's empty now.
So this new building you're talking about, will it fit all of the equipment that's over there currently, all the bug, bug trucks?
Currently our bug trucks are like nineteen eighties types pickups. There's really nothing special about them other than we can take the spray units out and store them inside for sure, but we don't really need to store those pickups inside. It's not critical. But if we have the room, we do and that's why they're there. But we, we slide the units out with the spray units and we could store them inside somewhere. We also have some other options for storage right at the moment. But I would like to get him a nicer shop where he's right on site with his shop or he's got some work benches and air conditioning and we're not heating two floors and that whole upstairs is an apartment we never use and we're heating and, and maintaining it. And it's just, it'd work way better for this new, new person if it works out.
So the, the net effect is if we sell this property is that it eliminates the insurance payments, it eliminates the utilities, it eliminates any maintenance on the building and it takes a building and puts it on the tax rolls.
Exactly.
Correct.
You'll always understand when I'm speaking about the other businesses, that building has been used and, and remodeled and remodeled and remodeled. So right now, it's pretty well sealed off from the other businesses, but we still, we share all the services. I think the water might come clear out from underneath the moose now. The heating is mostly separated. Subway and the moose have some issues with some stuff they're trying to get worked out now that Subway's remodeling. What the building just needs, when people remodel, we just need to be careful of how that gets done, but.
It's kind of a unique building. We've tried to sell it a couple, three times over the past few years. And just because of the location and the uniqueness of the building, it hasn't generated any interest.
Right.
But this person who operates a business right next door has a good reason to have it and she's the one with the bid.
Correct.
So Council, what do you think?
As much as I hate to take a loss on this building, I just, I don't see anything coming any sooner. So I would move to approve the sale of the real estate as presented.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion to accept the bid for the property. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the bid of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the property located at two seventeen West Twentieth Avenue. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We are unanimous in approving the sale.
Thank you.
Let her know.
I'll prepare a sale/purchase agreement. We'll do the paperwork for that.
Okay, good enough. Thanks.
We can consider that some economic development, too.
Exactly. She may put another business on the bottom.
Well, yeah, that'd be good.
Well, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, item number eight, award the bid new combination single-engine dual-stage sewer cleaner with hydrostatic-driven vacuum system mounted on a heavy-duty truck chassis. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Joe Johnson Equipment of Billings, Montana in the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. We have this water department supervisor, Tom Troxel, here tonight to explain that to you. So, Tom, if you'd come to the podium.
That was a mouthful.
God, I guess.
Good evening. Good evening, guys. We did everything we could to save some money on the purchase of this truck. As we know, the prices of commodities just shot through the roof this last year with steel, tires, and everything it takes to build a truck. So we felt that this, our recommendation with Joe Johnson was probably the best we could probably do. We could have saved or hung on to the truck and tried to sell it, sell it to a private party like we did with the last truck. But I talked to a number of people at our water conference, and nobody was looking for one in Wyoming at the time, and we'd have to look for a private party outside of Wyoming to sell it. So Joe Johnson, as you can tell, was, gave us the best offer for the truck, and we get to use it while the new one's being built, so it's a pretty good deal.
Hundred and fifty thousand is a pretty good trade-in for not getting it for somewhere between eight months and a year, I guess.
Right, right. At least we felt that way too, Mayor. You know, that truck does a lot of work for the city. It does work not only for our department, electrical department, streets and sanitation. It's used, it's a well-used piece of equipment.
And it's not cheap.
And unfortunately, it's not cheap.
Okay.
What year was that truck? I don't remember when we bought it, ten, twelve?
I think it's a two thousand twelve. Might be a two thousand eleven, Dennis.
And is there a particular reason why you want to replace it now?
Just for the fact it's on the capital plan. We had it on our capital plan for ten years out. We could extend that, but then you're looking to get nothing for a piece of equipment you gave three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for in ten years ago. So by this way, at least we're thinking, the city has never really done this before since we did it with the first factor is you're getting a little something for that piece of equipment versus sending it to an auction.
I mean, it still functions, we still can use it for another year, hopefully.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's well-maintained. The truck's always, all of our equipment's well-maintained. We have a good mechanic at the shop, or at least we did. So it's going to be a sad day to lose him, but we really essentially had only one problem with the old truck is the fan went out on the old truck, and that was expensive. That was fifteen thousand dollars to fix that fan. But if you think of the hours of use, I didn't bring the hours off that truck, but that fan's constantly used whenever that truck's in operation.
At the time of bid, it had four thousand fifty-one hours.
Lots of hours. Okay, any other questions for our water supervisor, Troxel? Thank you, Tom. Appreciate the information.
You bet.
Counsel?
I would move to award the bid to Joe Johnson Equipment of Billings for the new back truck.
Thank you, Doc. Councilman Kelly, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. A motion and a second to award the bid of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars to Joe Johnson Equipment of Billings, Montana for the back truck. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. We have approved the bid. Item number nine, ordinance first reading relating to surface water drainage. Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance creating and enacting chapter one, three point one eight of the Torrington Municipal Code, twenty twenty-two revisions relating to surface water drainage.
Okay. This is an interesting thing that's come to us as a result of action by the legislature about two years ago. And we're still trying to move forward on it, and so it might take a little discussion and a little explanation, but I think it's time for us to bring this forward. Director Public Works Harkins, are you ready?
Yes, I am, Mayor and Council. As we discussed at our work session, this is to create a stormwater utility where we can collect funds to enhance, expand, and maintain the storm drain utilities, or storm drains that we have within the city. We have numerous locations where there are flooding that occurs during storm events. This such of a utility would help us to alleviate those type of flooding locations. As you are aware from our discussions, that this will have to go on to the ballot in November, and the voters will have to approve it. So we've done our best to try to minimize the amount of burden financially for the residents of Torrington, but yet at the same time give the city the opportunity to take this particular util, or storm drain maintenance out of the general fund and create its own enterprise fund.
Okay, good enough. Mr. Troxel, do you want to speak to the condition of our current stormwater system? I know it's a kind of a surprise for you.
Tom's used to surprises.
Well, he's so good off the cuff, you know.
Oh, he does, yeah, that's true.
Well, I'll start with the, the last study we've done, and the only study that we've completed so far was the west side of the city of Torrington, basically from west sea to the west. Identified in that study, we have done some work out of that study and spent a little money. The state was gracious to give us some money for a storm pond, but we still have millions of dollars of improvements to do. That's just on the west side, and we got to move to the central and then to the east part of the city as well to identify what the needs are. It's unfortunate, you know, the stormwater utilities all throughout Wyoming have been overlooked for years. Are just, as I said earlier, it's part of the general fund, and essentially you're robbing the general fund to pay for improvements when that shouldn't be the case for a utility. The city needs to do something. I mean, hopefully the voters will agree. One good storm this summer, and it should help coincide with a positive vote because we have several flooding areas in the community.
Thank you, appreciate that. As I said, this came to us as a, as an action of the legislature about two years ago. And in the process, other communities have attempted to do this, and I believe the larger cities, Casper, Cheyenne already have it in place, places like that. But communities of our size, no one has done it yet. We were kind of waiting on Cody, thinking that they would go forward. They have not done so. Kind of a question about how do you do this? We believe that we have a process in place and know how to go about it. This process of getting it on the ballot, have the citizens of our community vote in favor of it, and, and then move forward with the process, and hopefully it goes forward. Any other comments that we could have? Mr. Estes?
Mayor, I will tell you, that FEMA flood map that we got, I think the last one was done nineteen seventy-six, this new map, most all of our flooding in Torrington is from no storm drain. So most, all the areas are storm drain issues. We really don't have like river flooding here in Torrington, but it's ninety-nine percent of that map is from storm drain.
Okay. So, an attempt. Any other stuff anybody wants to say about this? Okay, counsel, do you have any questions?
So legislature set it up so we have to pass an ordinance before we can send it to the voters?
Correct. The statute requires us to pass an ordinance. Lynette and I met with Ms. Kenyon two or three weeks ago, went through the process. Since it's kind of a, a new process for all of us, we determined that we got to do the ordinance and a ballot question, and they'll review it and have it on the ballot in November. But they want, the ballot question has to explain the, the means of financing. And basically, I've just plugged in this, this box that you see in your ordinance, although I've missed one, so I've got to amend that. And we're just going to put that right on the ballot to show them what the charges are going to be, and that's what they'll vote for, for or against.
So what happens if we pass it on three ordinances and then the voters say no? Then what happens to the ordinance?
It's dead. It's no good. It's not ballot. We won't publish until after the vote. There's no reason to publish. They just need to know that the council, the governing body, has approved going forward. It's a strange process, the first time I've ever seen that, but that's pretty clear in the statute is how they want it done.
Watched the flooding over the years get worse, and I suspect a lot of it's due to expansion to the north, more pavement, more construction, and those kind of things. Because I remember sitting at Taco John's one time, it looked like a river between it and the elevators. I think it's definitely needed, but I really like the idea of the voters getting to decide. It appeals to me somehow that we just don't impose it, but the voters get to decide.
Anything else? All right, at that point, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve this ordinance on first reading.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion on first. Is there a second reading? Second, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. A motion and a second to approve the ordinance on first reading relating to surface water drainage. Is there further discussion?
I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
Mr. Eddington, I believe at our work session when we talked about this, I think that's where it was at. There was some issue about whether it had to go on the ballot or whether we could just do this and move on.
It's extremely clear to us that it has to go.
Okay, because I think there was some question at that time as to whether it, it actually did or not, but I just wanted to get that clear.
And I'll provide that ordinance for you, the statute for you, excuse me, with the next council packet.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
That's good.
Further questions? Okay, we have a motion on the table. Ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we can move forward. Thank you, guys, for your work. Item number ten, ordinance on second reading, the fiscal year budget, twenty twenty-three, Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance providing for the appropriation of money by the city of Torrington, Wyoming to meet its general fund requirements and obligations, to meet its enterprise fund requirements and obligations for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two, and fixing the sum to be raised by taxation.
Thank you. Clerk Treasurer Stricker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we've, we've done a lot since the first reading of this ordinance. If you look at the last page, you can see every, every item of the ordinance that was changed since first reading. So we are at this point to a point where I think we can approve a balanced budget. The total budget is thirty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. We do, I do have some finalizing things we're checking on. Got some updates on maybe some more carryover items that are not going to get completed. Those won't affect the bottom line as they'll just all carry over the money in beginning cash and add it to the appropriation. The total budget will change, but the bottom line will not. So the next step after that is I need to finalize the administrative fees. That is the very last step, and we'll have that done for the third reading. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. We've had several work sessions, lots of discussion. But I think we're in a good place, so thank you all.
I believe we had today a discussion about casualty insurance. We had a new offer, and fortunately for us, it was a bit lower than what we expected.
Right, so that's a good thing.
Better adjustment than typical, so.
Right.
We've just reduced the building. So we talked.
We don't get that very often.
Questions for Clerk Treasurer Stricker?
I think that's awesome that you got a balanced budget before second or third reading, so way to go. And to all the employees.
All the staff, yes.
Everybody that was involved with that. I think we saw the email today that you had mentioned in the email all the things that you'd take or were able to take out and, and had the balanced budget, so I think that was, that was good news, so way to go, everybody, yeah.
I can't do it without all the department heads, that's for sure, and you.
So thank you.
Further comments or questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget as presented.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion to approve the budget. Is there a second? Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year budget on second reading. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are unanimous in approving the second reading of the twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. Thank you. Item number eleven, approval of the bills from May eighteenth through June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Clerk Treasurer Stricker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Attached your agenda were a list of bills, and then handed out tonight was an additional set. It's been three weeks since our approval. We have a lot of bills listed here. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I have just one question, and it's it's on page four of the original set, right at the top, Teresa Delgado. It's a bill from November fourth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a reason? She just not presented, or?
It's the first time we were presented with the bill, apparently.
She could have conveniently forgot it, but.
I'm glad she got it in before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Page seven of the first set of bills from Morehouse. Repairs to cart barn locker storage damage, seventeen thousand, what is that?
We had a, a windstorm. Oh, I don't remember what the date of it was, but it was a couple months ago, and it tore off the roof there at that cart barn.
Dennis can probably comment.
I was up on that roof. What had happened, you know how the parapet goes above the roof about two and a half foot with block? Whoever put the roof on the last time attached, attached the membrane to the side of that parapet, and it actually lifted the parapet and moved it. So it ripped the top of the parapet block off and slid it into the, into the roof, and luckily it didn't fall on anybody.
It's an insurance claim, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it was covered by our insurance. What was the deductible, about eight thousand? Thirty-six hundred. Thirty-six hundred.
And on the second set of bills, on page six, I've never heard of the Poms Tire Service. Where is that at?
That is in Gearing, I believe. It used to be Dale's Tire.
Oh, okay. And then on the same page. And then on the same page, Schum's Coda Associates, what is, what is that?
Councilman Kelly, that's a plan review, that's a company I use for third-party plan reviews. That was for the plan reviewers of the Sunrise Church building.
Review for what?
They review the plans and approve them.
For the remodel or something, you mean?
Yes, sir. They did a $1.7 million remodel in that building.
Holy cow.
Substantial improvement.
Now, is this a fee that they pay?
Yes, yes. The owners pay that fee.
With their building permit?
With their building permit. These, I don't know why this came in so late, because the building permit was issued quite some time ago, but they will pay it.
Yeah, because they've only been working on it about two years now?
No, they've only been actually doing construction maybe seven months, eight months, maybe.
Is it close to being done?
It's mostly drywalled, the inside, the chapel and everything inside's pretty well drywalled. It's a pretty nice building, I mean, they got some ways to go. New bathrooms and.
Shopco.
Yeah.
Amazing. Okay. Are there any other questions for Clerk Treasurer Stricker? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the bills as presented.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion to approve the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills, 518 through 67, 2022. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the bills. Item number 12 is public comment. If there's anyone here who tonight would like to address the council, speak to the council, complain to the council, whatever, this is the time to do it. We'll give you a couple minutes to come to the podium and speak your mind, and we'll do what we can to try to answer you. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council? I don't know. He doesn't look very favorable. You got anything to add, Lancer? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, see no one coming to the podium, we'll move on from there. At this point, I would entertain a motion to momentarily adjourn our regular session and open an executive session.
I would so move.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to adjourn from regular session and open executive session. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, we'll take three or four minutes and allow everybody to disperse, and then we'll open an executive session.